Good morning, everyone, and I'd like to welcome you here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. I have Don Schenker and Nige Fligle, my and myself, Mike Stein, that's our county supervisors. I have Lisa and Bjorn from the auditor's office. I have Luanne in the background, our executive assistant. Todd Kenny, our county engineer, and Mary is here from the newspaper, I believe, yeah. So we call the meeting to order, and first on our agenda this morning is Mr. Todd Kenny, our county engineer. Good morning, Todd.
Morning. So the first two items on the agenda are to approve two utility permits from the line. For uh two different areas, but basically to um connect or install new service lines.
Electrical lines.
Yep, electrical. Look through the permit, I mean, they're gonna, they're, they're, basically, they state that they will board all roads, waterways, and approved driveways will be directionally board, and they're gonna place it as far back against the right-of-way line as possible for the A H D, so that's what the permit.
Nothing in the roadway itself, I guess.
No, that's not what the permit says. So they'll go to the right-of-way line and put it as close to the right-of-way line as they can, so. Or that approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We gotta do these two separately, or can we do them the same?
Well, that's why I put them in separately, but if you wanna do them together, then.
So we can do the first one, uh Richland's five, sections five and six, you could do that one first.
I'll second that motion. I have motion second to approve line energies for Richland Township section five and six. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Make a, make a motion for the Autocore Townships, section one.
For twelve.
I'll second that, but what about just that one? A, there's the installation, single and three-phase line at three hundred Street, E fifty-five.
That, we just did that at Richland Township.
Okay, alright, good, yeah, I'll second it.
Alright, so I have a now, I have a motion and a second for line energies permit, uh utility permit for section one and twelve, and Autocore Township. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion carried.
Alright, next, uh we had on the agenda for Joel Felpas driveway, but Roger needs to meet with him, and they're not available to meet till next week, so we're gonna pull that till next week.
Okay.
The driveway.
Able that?
Yeah. And then the next item is, you guys already approved or awarded for contracts, but this, the contracts just for your signature, basically, so we've done action on that.
Do any action on the signatures?
No, I think you already took action on those, if I remember correctly.
I, I, I think we approved them.
You accepted.
Yeah, why don't we approve the signature, maybe that we were.
I'll make a motion to approve the signatures for the rock contracts.
I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the signature on the contract is previously approved. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay. That's it?
Okay.
Um, then I sent you guys an email with the proposed road improvement policy, and then the scoring matrix, uh with an example of uh three different, I think, roads that. Either high A T or we've gotten petitions on, so you can kind of look that over. The D O T requires, if we're gonna pave the road, when we program that road in the five-year program, which is required, it has to have, has to have fifty uh paving points. So that's why I separated it out, and I put the I O D O T paving points, because if it doesn't reach the fifty, you have to have uh a, you know, pretty significant reason why you're gonna do that, like, like there's gonna be a new business, or uh, you know, a co-op, or something's gonna be built on the road that's gonna change the A D T, so. Um, and then the other part of that for road improvement, um.
Thanks.
Includes a, like a component for uh the geometry of the road, so if we got a, a road that's got only one curve or less, or one hill or less, those would score higher, because um there's less, less safety-related issues of, of improving a road that has several curves, or, or several hills that become an issue for, because once the road gets improved, the traffic speed will increase, so that's the bottom line, so that's why you try to avoid the, the road geometry.
So with the curve and with the hills and whatnot in it, uh I know some of these that do get paved, they still have a lower split because of the fact of the curb, or whatever it may be, but.
Um, so what we would do is look at, uh, we would still wanna meet the, the three R guidelines for rural road design, national design guides, so like, if the curves that are there, we go out and measure the, the length of curve, degree of curve, and if it falls within a design speed of thirty-five to forty-five, we would post it at, say, forty-five. If it's less than thirty-five, then we have to post it accordingly, but we would not try to regrade it, we would just take the existing curb information and see where it falls, what design speed that existing curvature meets, then that's the posting speed, because we're not gonna regrade this to fifty-five miles an hour. We would just see what curves are there, look at the design chart and see with that curvature that's already there, what should the posted speed be? Basically, we would back into the design speed, if you will, so.
I didn't really look at the point system that detailed, but does it include like a voluntary?
Yeah, so contributions score differently, like by percentage of the project cost, so there's different points for that.
And is this like the ma- the matrix and the scoring system and a restructuring plan, is that part of our five-year program that's gonna be presented?
We, we can do whatever we want.
Uh, I mean, I think it's gonna be good to have them kind of plans, or, you know, I mean, a good explanation, I don't know. You know, there are different times, we have videos, of course, or, or, but I don't know what your plan is, but.
So I can, we can do whatever, so we can, we can talk about the road improvement policy at the five-year program, if you want, that's fine, it makes sense. Uh, my plan was to kind of have uh a chronologic pictures of like road, gravel road condition, like what we have, we have pictures of bad roads, obviously. And then kind of show what a road section should loo- look like, and then I have some pictures from like Clinton County of what it looks like. Once we diss the shoulders, once we bring it on the road, once we compact it, and we put rock down, so kind of people get a, a visual of what it's gonna look like. It's gonna be a very rough surface to drive on, when we take a road that's like this and build it up like that with material and rock and that kind of thing, until that stuff, that material gets bladed a couple times, traffic hits it and gets it packed back down. I mean, we're gonna pack it with rollers, but um, I mean, time and traffic also do a lot of compression due, so. This, yes, this.
Well, I don't know that it's gonna get worse, but the, the process itself, but yeah, I, I like the idea of the explanation and just, that's what they're looking for right now. I mean, we certainly have plenty of calls in the last three or four days, and they're actually, you know, pretty good about the, the fact that what the weather is and how, what we can do and what we can't do, it's just like, what are we gonna do going forward?
Yeah, yeah, so the main thing of the gravel road plan is to basically, you know, reestablish a cross-section, and, and the first, the biggest component of that is putting crown of the road, so we can get water from the center of the road to the edge of the road, and then hopefully to the ditch, that's the, that's the main goal of this first, first process, and then, um, we can do that on a, a, a big section of road, like we talked about, the goal is trying to do ten miles per district this year, ten or fifteen the next year, and then after about three or four years, four or five maybe, pending, we should be able to get all the roads in each district, but we're gonna start with the highest A D T roads and work our way down, basically, so.
And it completely makes sense to have, I just don't know that we had that in place before, so I appreciate that, and it. Hopefully, we can uh get that out to the public and explain that, and, and go forward.
When I talked to Todd about the roller situation a little bit, and you wanna kind of, you say you're gonna check that other place, or?
Yeah, so if you remember, we, we got a price on a roller, and it was like forty-one hundred bucks to, to ship it. And uh I emailed back the supplier, and I said, is this a typo? And he said, no. Um, and then I asked, well, what if we put two on one shipment, if we buy two, and he said it would probably be five to six hundred dollars less expensive than the forty-one hundred, so forty-one hundred plus whatever, thirty-five hundred, uh, basically, which I said, okay, but uh, um, what I'm gonna do is get, I think they're coming out of Canada, though, from this supplier, and he said, depending on, if he's got two in the yard, and he can put two on the trailer at once, then there would be savings, yes, but if he doesn't have two in the yard when we order two, and he's gotta go find one, a- and they ship separately, there's not gonna be savings that way, so I'm gonna look for another vendor, hopefully closer, possibly, and, and see if we can get a comparable price, and, because like I said, we got, we have some time, you know, we probably won't start this process till, you know, April, May, it just depends, you know, how the, how spring and summer and everything kind of progresses on the road condition, so um, you don't wanna start it too early, but I wanna get started as soon as we can.
So you actually also said, uh, mentioned something about a rental that would, it first maybe a month or two that we could try and see, and that seventy percent of the rental would go off the purchase price. I don't know if that's still available, and/or you also mentioned maybe um using or borrowing or renting Clinton County's equipment.
Yeah, so the, the, the one, the quote is still with the, the original quote, still is, if we rent it for a month, it's a minimum of one month, seventy percent of that rental comes off of the purchase price, that's still available, uh, yeah, I'm sure, you know, Clinton County would, we should have, you know, one that you guys should be able to borrow. But, you know, if we end up, if the money's there to buy two, we'll buy two, and we'll use both of them, so.
I guess that's the thing, if we need to, uh, we will proceed that way, if we need one and two at a given time, and, and we're still willing to work with Clinton County, maybe that's our avenue to, I, I don't.
Yeah, so we have uh, we have three in Clinton County, so uh, the deal is uh, worse, in Clinton County, we're broken into three maintenance districts, so, uh, we have two retrievers, so if one retriever is in District Two, then at least one of the rollers, if not two, is in there, so they're retrieving and rolling, and then another district can be doing that, too, so then, you know, basically, we can have two districts one at the same time. That would be ideal, if you could get a second retriever, as we get, as we get more guys trained, and, and we figure out, you know, here in Jackson County, what, what we need to do, then you get another retriever, and you could have multiple districts pulling their roads and shaping the roads all at once, instead of having it, have to go around, uh, you know, one district at a time, so.
I sure like the idea of working together, able, capable of doing that, that would really, I mean, good neighbors usually give them a little better with work together.
Yeah, and I think we'll probably, I was talking to my road foreman in Clinton County, that we may end up taking one of our operators with a machine and retriever up here, too, so we'll have one, the machine, our machine with retriever that we could use, like, as a demonstration or training, and we'll have the one in Jackson County machine that's spinning with the new retriever, so we, you know, we could be having two working, you know, simultaneous when we start into this process, too, so.
Like it all. Appreciate it, Todd.
Sorry.
Yeah. I'll keep forwarding them, Paul.
What's that?
I'll keep forwarding that.
Yeah, thanks.
Alright, thank you. So, um, next on our agenda is visitors, visitors tours, or citizens, if anybody here or online that would like to speak or approach the board. Seeing none, Lisa, are you prepared?
Yeah. Um, Marty was here last week, and we know that we need to move forward with the carpet bids for the zoning office, so I have asked Marty to come in during my proportion of the board today to open up and to talk about the flooring, so Marty, if you wanna, so we can get moving forward on this project.
Morning.
Good morning, Marty.
Good morning, Marty.
Um, we did open the evening last week, but we just had some questions on them. Um, hopefully, I got it all straightened out. Um, I got three, I received three bids. Uh, do you want me to explain it? Um, two of them bid twenty ounce and twenty-six ounce carpet. I would highly suggest that we go with the twenty-six, uh, because there's a lot of traffic through the building, okay? Uh, with that being said, one of them uh bid a carpet that is fifteen foot wide, so there's no seams in it. The other two are twelve foot wide, and they, so it will have a seam in the, in the carpet. And I'm sure you guys looked at the carpet.
Mm-hmm.
And you see where it failed, it was at the seam, so I just wanna point that out. With that being said, um, the bid from Justin Feller is, and I'm just gonna do the twenty-six ounce one, okay?
Good.
Um, is three thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and sixty cents, and that's for a twelve-foot carpet width. It'll have the seam, okay?
Is that one room, two rooms?
That is two rooms.
Okay.
And that's doing the first office?
And the courtroom, yes. Yes. His bid is kind of different, and I tried to reach this gentleman, but I couldn't get it done, so I think I got it, the price right, by what, what is here. The second one is from Bright, Bright Box Ford Flooring, again, um, I don't know the ounce on, that they priced, but I did try, try to reach him, and they said they would get back to me, and never did. I called him again this morning and couldn't get through it, nobody was there. But his bid, or their bid, is three thousand two hundred and ninety dollars for both rooms. Again, that's a twelve-foot carpet, it will have a seam. The third bid is from Till Flooring. Um, he did price a fifteen-foot uh carpet, white carpet, so there will be no seams, and his bid is forty-one hundred and forty-one dollars.
So for twenty-six ounce?
Yes, yes.
Forty?
Forty-one, forty-one.
Well, um, how, how many of them bid, or did they all bid a, did you say twenty ounce?
Well, all but the one.
On the Bright Box, but those bids are for twenty-six ounce.
Yes, and Bright Box, I, I can't tell, because it's not on his sheet, either one. And like I said, I tried to make contact with them, I did talk to someone over there, and they said they would get back to me with that inform, excuse me, that information, but never did. And then I tried to call him again this morning, um, and to no avail.
So I guess my question is, if some, if one or two of them bid a twenty ounce, I would just like to know what the difference is, and I don't know what the difference to this carpet is, a twenty or twenty-six, whatever it is, I'm.
I'm pretty sure this is twenty-six, and I'm pretty sure the gray, the original carpet is the twenty.
And how old is it?
Uh, thirty years old. The gray, I would say.
So if the twenty lasted me thirty years, per se, uh, normally, I have found that when you buy the best carpet, you get sick of it, looking at it after ten years, so you buy a new anyway, whether it's wore out or not.
But that isn't the case here, as you know, and some of this carpet should have been replaced ten years ago, because it has rips in it.
Still curious of what the difference in prices for the twenty.
Yes, I have two prices on the twenty ounce, um. I do not have Justin's figured out, but, but.
Yeah, you need, you need to add up the numbers, is that what you're saying?
Well, the difference between the carpet on Justin is, that one is uh seven twenty, and the other one is eight seventy. So that would be eighty.
The rest of the installation and the shipping is the same.
Yeah, I would think, yeah, it should be, yeah, I would think.
Tear out, whatever it is.
Yeah, I would think it would be the same, the, the only difference would be that the price of the carpet.
Right.
Our, what do you have there, square foot?
Um.
Eight seventy from seven twenty, or seven twenty.
The price, I, the square foot isn't on that one. Um, one is third, the, the, the magistrate's office is thirty-seven yards, and the other one, the courtroom, is forty-six.
Who's the other one that?
Um, Till quoted the, the twenty, the twenty ounce would be, uh, for the magistrate's office would be sixteen thirty-four, so that's less than, that's like a hundred dollars less. And the courtroom is twenty-two eighty-seven on the, on the courtroom. So you, you know, you're talking three hundred bucks.
So we're talking a difference total from low to second low was a hundred and seventeen, hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah.
Basically, four hundred and fifty dollars difference.
Hundred and seventy, from what I'm looking, thirty-one seventeen to thirty-two ninety, and the two lowest bid. About, I, all are above, a timely manner, the sort of supply and demand, and.
Couldn't tell you that.
No, he's not been able to get in contact with two of them.
Right, and I, I, you know, before, I would say, I would probably take two to three weeks, probably. I, I don't know, that's what, but that's usually what it takes.
Painting be finished by then, I suppose.
Depends what else goes wrong, you know? I'm only one person. Okay.
Understand.
You're looking at a thousand dollars difference, I, I'm okay with some seams.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have always been, I've always been uh custom, I guess, to twelve-foot carpet, I don't know that there's a problem, I usually stand behind it, there's an issue, but.
Yeah.
If that's been in here thirty years, and that's all the damage that it's done to it right now, I mean, it's still livable with it.
Right, and there's a lot of traffic, though, would been in and out of that room.
Well, yeah, and I don't know what the traffic will be now, either, you know, it depends on what we use them, yeah.
Now, the seam, you know, I look in the courtroom, and it looks like they put a chunk of carpet, a chunk of carpet, and the seams right underneath the chairs. When they do a twelve-foot, could they spin that, run the piece lengthwise, and have the seam more off the one side, where?
I would have to talk to the carpet layer, but that would be a, I would think it would be a possibility.
Yeah. And we just have to come.
It would, yeah, it would make sense, I think, even with the doorways, the way they're situated, but.
Yeah, if you put the, in the magistrate's office, if you put the seam to the south side, would be less wear and tear on it.
And then the other.
And then the other one, I put it on the north side.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, I would touch base with, with that.
I change your square footage.
So.
Good.
I, I, I would like to move forward with it.
Well.
They're both bidding twenty-six ounce.
Well, and, and I'm sure, like I said, I don't know what, yes, 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 because when I went in there, I went to the next room, the, where Lori's gonna be, and I showed him that carpet, and that's the samples they give me, and I took that to Lori, and that's, she picked it out, the color out of that sample.
Well, um. Now, are you, have any concern at all? I don't know of this fellow, guy, I don't, any concern with the fact?
Well, all I know is, I think he laid carpet for the guy in Springbrook, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows that, but that's where I think.
He's worked for floors and more for several years, and then he's had his own business now, I think he told you, he was up in Asbury now, Lynn.
Yep.
A building up there. I mean, he's been around a while, he's on the, right on the, right across from Billy Sand and Gravel.
Yeah, I, I can't vouch for him, but when he was here, he seemed like he knew what he was doing, just by talking to him, you know?
So all local and the county type of deal?
Yes. I try to do that.
Do you wanna stick with the, with Feller being the low bid, you would wanna stick to the twenty-six ounce or the twenty ounce and save the hundred and fifty bucks, and hundred and fifty bucks, doesn't, it's a hundred and fifty bucks total?
Yeah, there's a, the, yeah, because the carpet. See, it's, this thing is really hard to figure out, because he, he's got the little room, carpet is seven twenty, and, and the twenty-six ounce is eight twenty, but then down below, then he's got all the tear-out shipping, and then he's got both rooms. See, it's, I'm gonna let you decipher this, because I couldn't get ahold of him, and I don't know if you're around, maybe it's more than that, I can't, I cannot decipher that. Like I said, I tried to get ahold of the gentleman, and it, I couldn't do it.
To me, it looks like both room, the twenty-six ounce would be two thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars for just the carpet. And one thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven.
Labor?
One thousand seven hundred and eighty-five sixty for the twenty ounce.
Well, don't even give it to me out this.
So twenty-one seventy-two.
Yeah, he's just kind of double, shipping stays the same, tear out. There's two fifty for both rooms, one twenty-five for one room. Install for both rooms, four sixty-five, install for one, the little room is two twenty-five.
So you have twenty-one fifty-two for the carpet, we have what else?
Oh, twenty-one fifty-two for carpet, you're doing both rooms, you get four sixty-five for install.
Four sixty-five.
Hmm.
Two fifty for tear out.
Two fifty.
Yeah.
Shipping one fifty.
One fifty.
Yeah.
Labor for platform, one hundred.
That's it?
That's all, that's both rooms.
For both rooms.
Thirty-one seventeen. Are you out? There's sixty cents on there somewhere, or?
Yeah, but the carpet was sixty cents.
Yes.
And I would say that's obviously what, yeah, and that's for both rooms, yeah.
Because he doesn't break it down, four room off separate, he just does the little ones.
Right.
And you have a total for Bright Box, that's thirty.
Thirty-two ninety.
And that, we don't know what outside is.
No, we do not.
That goes down.
Sorry.
My motion would be to go with Feller. But.
Was that a motion?
That was my motion.
So just on, I forgot, I figured out the twenty ounce, and it came to a twenty-seven fifty versus thirty-one.
For both rooms?
Yeah. At twenty-seven fifty and sixty cents versus the thirty-one.
So what's the difference in that, Don?
Four hundred bucks. Two fifty, three fifty, three seventy, yeah.
I think for the little bit of money, I think we should go with the heavier ounce, because I do believe it'll last longer. Like I said, this carpet, I don't know about this carpet, because it's been replaced.
For the twenty-six ounce, correct?
Yes.
I'll second it. I have a motion in a second to approve the low bid of color. Install the carpet in both rooms, all of the favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried.
So I had to take the truck, the tow truck, to the Ford dealer, again, the engine light come on. Um, they're gonna check it out, and I'll, I have one more gentleman coming to look at the roof, to, to see uh, what his price is, that way I'll have three, three bids on to, to do the roof, to repair the roof.
And heating unit at the care facility.
Pardon me?
Heating unit at the care facility.
Um, I haven't got to that yet, I will call Jared, I told, I know I told you I'd call him, but I haven't done that yet. Uh, the last I talked to Service One, he was gonna come down and look at it, and I know he came down and looked at it, but I don't know if we got a price back, I will find that out.
Okay, whoever's looking at it, tell them we need to move along and make a decision, I mean, we're getting out of the season a little bit, but we still need to move on and make a decision.
I will do that.
Thank you, and the basement looks ninety percent better.
It even looks better now, because I think the last of it left, uh, the, the monitors, that we think are no good, is what I thought. Mike, I have a guy that. Mike, I have a guy that might want them to to thoroughly check them out, make sure they're no good or good. And we're we're gonna give them to him cuz they're, they won't do us no good. Okay? And if not, we'll take them to landfill, but they're about two hundred pounds a piece. And we, if we can get find somebody that wants them, we wanna do that instead of spending them money just to get rid of them. All right?
Thanks Marty.
Yep, have a great day.
It's okay, thank you.
Alright, Lisa, sorry to interrupt your business there.
I think that we needed to move forward on that, so this morning I need a motion to approve the minutes of the February seventh twenty twenty three board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. An authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second to approve the minutes from the February seventh twenty twenty three board proceedings, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose nay, motion carried.
Need a motion to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of five hundred ninety eight thousand two hundred and ninety one dollars.
I'll make that motion to approve the claims.
Have a motion in a second to approve the claims in the amount of five hundred ninety eight, two hundred and ninety one dollars. Uh, just a side note is we had a fair amount of um construction bills in there again, so. We are moving forward, I did come down this morning and there's action, so. They're working in the mud. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose nay, motion carried.
I need a motion to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes of December fourteenth twenty twenty two meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion in seconds to approve and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for December fourteenth of twenty twenty two. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay, motion carried.
I need a motion to approve the renewal of the special class C retail alcohol license with living quarters and outdoor service. To Preston Valley Golf at forty two nine ninety eight Forty Fifth Street Preston. Effective February second twenty twenty three through February first twenty twenty four.
Removed.
I'll second that.
Have a motion for seconds to approve the renewal of a class. C liquor license to Preston Valley as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose nay, motion carried.
We have received word um concerning the next five opioid settlements, it is from Tiva. Allergen, Walmart, Walgreens and CBS. And I just wanna make sure um who you would like to have the designated person to sign the documents and. The participation document in the new opioid settlement. Um, if you, I mean, I have been designated, but I didn't want to presume that, so it's up to you as far as who you would like to. Sign this paperwork for um these next five settlements.
I I seen that email come through, I guess my question is Lisa, are you willing to do that?
Sure, I mean, we, I I only do the signing of the documents, I have no control over the money, obviously you do. So it's just a matter of us getting the money in, I can't tell you how much we're going to receive because. They're waiting for all of the counties and the cities in the state of Iowa to sign these participation agreements. And then we'll know what money is gonna come to us here in Jackson County.
Or what we can use it for.
Yeah, well, I mean, I handed out that sheet and it is very specific, so I. I don't know what we're gonna use it.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, if you look at that, look at some of the items that are listed there, you know, how far can you think outside the box on them, but.
I did a lot, I did visit with John about this and, you know, he does not wanna be the designated signer and. He does um agree that we need to move forward and he agrees that we should sign these participation agreements.
But whatever funding we could get, I'm sure we can find a spot either in the schools or in the, you know.
Yeah.
Law enforcement, wherever it may be, yeah.
So if I'm the person that you would like to designate, I would need a motion to approve and authorize Auditor Smith. To sign the documentation to participate in the new opioid settlements with Tiva, Allergen, CBS, Walgreens and Walmart.
I still make that motion for Auditor Smith to do the appropriate statement.
I'll second that.
Motion in second to approve Auditor Schmidt to sign the related documents as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, oppose nay?
Um, thank you for that, and I'd like to call Shelley forward because.
Thank you for that.
Um, I'm calling Shelley forward because we do need to try and move forward. As best as we can when it comes to um getting our maximum tax levy. Kinda get the motion going and I know that we've got some things happening in the state of Iowa and in the legislature. So Shelley, can you enlighten us?
I know you sent to us and I don't wanna interrupt, you sent two different color coded. Okay, we don't, we don't have them in front of us, so correct me.
Well, I did not give you more copies.
Would you like copies before we make this?
Would you like to visually see what she's saying there?
Right now, you're talking about setting the.
Maximum.
This is green.
And red.
And red.
Okay, and you're wanting to set it for what, the seventeenth of March?
That's a question.
Well, March seventh is a public here, a potential public hearing date, if we do it today, our potential public hearing date is March seventh. For the maximum levy property tax. Maximum property tax levy hearing, public hearing. Um, normally, March seventh would be the day that we, the first day that we could do this. The last day that we would do, be able to do this and still be on March thirty first deadline. Which is our normal deadline, but because the state has. You know, put their hands in the pot, um.
To possibly limit us. In our evaluations, reduce our evaluations by that two percent on residential rollback. They, if they pass that law, which I believe is being debated this afternoon. Um, then they would push our deadline back to April thirtieth. So if they do that, then today is a moot point, but we don't know that until this afternoon, hopefully. Um, it might possibly be tomorrow or Friday before we would know. So. I don't know whether you want to approve this contingent upon what the state legislature does, I don't even know if you can do that. Um, we could have you approve the green sheets, which is. The higher uh levy dollars. With and put that in the levy notice, the maximum levy notice. And then at the hearing for the budget amendment or the. The regular budget hearing, you could reduce that green, those green dollar amounts. Down to what you want.
Any dollar amount, doesn't have to necessarily be the red. I've really not approved our budget yet to say we're good with it.
Right.
So, um.
We just. The maximum, but again, you can lower it to whatever you want, this is.
The combination, yeah, uh, of of those levies. You could lower it by somewhere in between the the green and the red, you could. Lower it below the red.
I guess my assumption is that we're gonna get the extension, I've always heard that and I've heard it and I've heard it, but. If we don't, it's not gonna just throw us in it, it's gonna throw everybody else in it, did he, cuz I'm sure they're depending on it, you know.
Yes.
And I'm not quite ready to, you know, unless again. If you, if you go ahead and publish the maxes so that we can reduce.
You can reduce, you can't raise, but you can reduce, that's why I suggest going with the the higher amount, the green amount.
And can you disclose that amount?
Um, for the general basic, it would, the dollars would be four. Four million one hundred and eighty six thousand two hundred and fifty seven dollars. The general supplemental. Would be one million four hundred and ninety eight thousand seven thirty three. The Pioneer Cemetery would be twenty nine thousand four hundred and fifty nine dollars. The jail bond fund would be three hundred and sixty seven thousand four seventy five. And the rural services would be two million five hundred and seventeen thousand nine nineteen.
So can we have a. Round number of the, if would there be an increase to our levy, is that what you said, okay? Can we have a round number of what that might be?
Of the levy rate?
Yes.
Of the green?
Of the green.
Of the higher of the two, yes.
For countywide levies, do you want an individual by levy?
No, I think just total.
Okay.
It doesn't, some people might not get the total because of where they live, so.
Well, what I'm gonna give you is the countywide, which would be the all the general services and then the rural. So the first one is the countywide and that would be five point zero seven. Four, six. Eight.
Mike, are you looking for a a pennies, is that?
Yes.
Dollars and cents, pennies, how about, what what would the levy go up, Shelley?
Total levy between um countywide and rural is forty four cents. Point four 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 three eight.
And that's the max.
That would be the maximum.
Did you split that and the general basic and the supplement or is that split?
The general, um, the general would be the at the three point five.
Okay.
And then the general supplemental would be at. One point two five three zero seven.
So we're looking at an increase in the supplemental fund, which is fund two.
Yeah.
And we're looking at an increase in fund eleven, which is our rural.
One was sixteen point some cents and one was twenty five.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the supplemental went up, would have, would be going up.
Sixteen point.
Eight.
Yeah, sixteen point eight.
No. To get to the dollar amount, we're looking at.
Sixteen point some cents.
Yes.
And the other one will go up. Twenty five and together they equal forty four point four cents. So sixteen point. Eight. Sixteen one eighty twenty five point six. That don't equal forty four yet.
There's a lot of discussion in the newspapers and on the media now, but. Taxing entities faced with this. Potential hundred and twenty six to a hundred and thirty three million, I think is what one TV thing reported. Across the state of Iowa and I know that there's million dollar differences down in the flat cities that I had heard, so.
Can you tell me what is, how it affects us?
Twenty seven point nine cents. And it's twenty seven point nine and sixteen point five.
There you go.
Sixteen point five, twenty seven point nine. Respect.
And the rule was twenty seven foot nine, correct?
Yes.
So that includes our plan, if you will. For restructure and rebuild and. So was there a, was there a, again, a round number that affected this change in rollback?
It put us back to a flat, pretty much a flat. The uh evaluation increase, so we lost the about.
Whatever, our increase in revenue would have been cuz of assessment.
It was in the general, I believe it was somewhere around seventy six thousand uh tax dollars.
Hmm.
Um, it went down to, I think it was seventy two thousand. Or uh we lost seventy two thousand, so we would be gaining about four thousand dollars in property taxes. In the general.
And because the general fund is maxed out, which has been maxed out for.
Yeah.
For as long as I render, yeah.
Well, that's where most of our bills are.
And I think the other thing in looking forward, um looking at next year is. This is gonna be more difficult based on some of the reading than I've done already, but the state legislature is gonna do to.
I've been trying to read some of that stuff where they're combining different levies and restricting growth and restricting markets, like. How how can, how can they do that, because. You you read what they're saying, where you can restrict how much property values increase, but then again, you go the assessors. And the state comes in and if you're not within what market value is, they they do an equalization order and Jack, I mean, so. It's almost setting one side up the fail versus, you know.
Well, they're almost contradicting each other, what they're trying to do to the point where, I mean, yeah, you're tied tied, I mean, we're, our hands are tied.
Well. But the assessor's office, when they set those value, those. Assess values, they put it or they use the market value, but then the state comes in. And looks at those values and says, oh, you you raised it too mu- it's it's too high. So you, they come in and. The rollback.
Yeah, they changed rule.
Percent, so it's a moot point for what the assessor's office does.
They're manipulating the data all the time, yeah, manipulating what the value of the houses are based on equalization orders. And manipulating as far as what the rollback is.
I mean, I can see he certainly needs to, with with, I mean, you can almost take away the last. Two years cuz it's coming back to where it was, trust me. I see it every day, but you know, they, it was, it was insanely over. For a year and a half or two years, basically. And now with the interest rates up and and evaluations and, I mean, it's coming, it's coming back around full circle. But for him to make an evaluation, yeah. I I can't see why, you know, I go down the road and see four or five brand new houses, everything, and where's my revenue, where is that revenue? I mean, it's, to me, there's gotta be much more assessed revenue than I than I don't see, I I would. When you said seventy six thousand, I think, I just can't imagine that, to me, that with the right. I know the rollback took away what your, you know, assessment might have done, but. Still, new assessments to me should have been more than that.
Well, I remember, I think I remember seeing somewhere in all of those. Um, restrictions that they will not allow us to use the increase in construction, you know, the the new construction. That, that two percent.
You mean that's going to be put on next, that a tax year?
Yeah, I don't think they will. Yeah.
Yeah, how can you do that when we? That with economic.
Yeah.
Mike, this is the ISAC thing, the email that was sent out automatically adjusts levy rates down based on growth evaluation of over. A hundred and two point five percent, so you can't, it's almost like that's the max growth.
Yeah.
And they'll readjust it if it's more than that, down to a hundred and two point five.
So you could have a brand new city. With, you know, one hundred million dollar valuations of on those houses and from what I've read. The state will not allow us to use the evaluate the taxes on those houses.
So this is a, that's what, an email that was put out by ISAC. Uh, today, the Senate Ways and Means Subcommittee will consider Senate Study Bill eleven twenty four at three forty five this afternoon. Um, this bill would consolidate the general basic and the supplemental levies. It would consolidate rural basic and supplemental levies. Automatically adjust levy rates down based on valuation growth over one and a hundred and two point five percent. It will limit property tax revenue growth. It'll limit the reasons for additions to basic levies. It'll make adjustments to bonding and leasing thresholds and it'll also add some requirements to the annual financial reports. This is handicapping right here. Can I just say, you know, I should have been campaigning last ball, it doesn't do any good. You know, talk about unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
So we're looking at some very tough budgeting.
Well.
There was a county that I read, not to interrupt you, Mike, there was a county that I read that they took over an ambulance service and they hired nine ambulance personnel. And I think that budget was like a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense. They don't know how they're gonna pay for it now. They have no idea how they can sustain that, so they probably are gonna have to cut. I mean, it was, it was a, it was a very sad email that I read because you could just hear the pain as they were typing. You know, knowing that they created something wonderful and yet because of funding, they're probably gonna have to do, go in a different direction. That's not Jackson County, but there was another county.
So there still is the fact that if it's over one point two, you have to. Publish or.
I don't think you're even allowed to do that for the additional.
Well, this did that last year, didn't we?
I know, but I don't think that they will let us. From what I've read.
Okay, so this, I guess we'll have to move forward with what we have right now, so we can't project, we can't project what's going or what they're going to do.
Well, they will come to their senses. I think my suggestion would be that we publish what I call the green, go ahead with the green and then continue budget discussions.
Correct, I I I would tend to agree with that, I'm not ready to, yeah, to make a commitment to.
I would recommend you get a new printout too and go through and look at it. And so we can.
Did you find anything? Did you find anything that we had won, speaking of that?
A few things.
Let us know.
I didn't get a big chance, I didn't get, I got through a couple of departments, but there's a few things here and there, so. We'll figure it out.
You're talking about the whole book budget, you got it, yeah, that's fine, you can print me one out, that can compare.
I'm sure she prints it out like the same. She got us that rookie thing, it was weird, I was flipping pages back and forth and I was like, this is.
I understood it.
Oh, I could get the data, I could figure it out, but.
It'd be a large table.
So with that being said.
We need a motion to set it as March seventh.
Here's what I'm gonna say, today then I would like to have a motion to approve the publication in the three official county newspapers of the notice for the public hearing on the maximum possible tax levy to be included in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four county budget with the public hearing date set for March seventh, twenty twenty-three at ten AM in the boardroom at the courthouse.
And.
So that date will stay no matter what, even if they. This is just, I mean, you're not gonna raise your tax dollars anymore than what we've got on the green, so that's.
Extend or not, we can, we know this is gonna be the max we would ever do. It could only go down from here, so we can keep on our same timeline, whether they extend it or not, and just not be the ones trying to get it in.
I believe so, yes.
And unless, unless you make the motion contingent upon the extension, that.
Benefit.
Yeah, I get it. I guess there's that, but uh, I mean, we still have three weeks to do that.
But the problem is, we make this motion, it goes to the paper.
Yeah, but.
I know, but that is, is still, so if we do a contingent, then we're gonna have to rerun a new ad and all this kinda stuff, because.
And I will.
We can still reduce the levy.
I second that motion.
A motion is second to uh, prove the publication in the newspapers on the possible levy as presented. All those in favor say aye. Oppose nay? Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
The last line's already been taken care of.
And pray. Going, but pray.
Thank you, Shelley. On the win. You're on board.
Short and quick, good morning. Calendar this week, um, at ten o'clock, which we're coming right up on. Um, I kept, has a weekly legislative update session by Zoom if we choose to participate in that. Otherwise, at four o'clock this afternoon, it's a McCokey River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. Tomorrow, February fifteenth at nine thirty AM, um, then we'll be on KMAQ's Just Talk. Theoretically, that will be Sherry's last day, I believe she said in her email. So if they don't know what's gonna happen to that, she didn't know what's gonna happen to it after that date, so. Also, on the fifteenth, um, at six PM is conference board meeting, um, here for all of you. Thursday, February sixteenth at nine AM is a housing trust fund meeting, um, in Dubuque or by Zoom for Nin. At twelve thirty, we have a work session on the Law Enforcement Center for all of you. And at six PM that night is Limestone Bluffs RC and D by Zoom for Don. Friday, February seventeenth at noon is a DCAT meeting in Duwitt for Mike.
I have eleven AM. District. Six update.
Oh, okay.
Zoom, we talked about that.
Oh, the, the weekly, the weekly update, yep, yep. And she just turned over the calendar and said, it'll be every week unless you say otherwise, so, okay, all right. Monday, February twentieth is a state holiday, so state offices will be closed that day, but the courthouse will be open. Um, five o'clock, um, that afternoon is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Meeting, um, by Zoom for Don. And at six o'clock is a zoning commit, committee, commission meeting downstairs in the community room or by Zoom for any of you. And at seven o'clock, I tentatively have either regular meeting date for Together Rebuild, if any of you wanted to go to that. Our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, February twenty-first at nine AM. And that afternoon at two PM is a Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO meeting in Musketeen or by Zoom for Don, they usually like to do those.
Thursday, it will be attached to pack for the next meeting, the meeting will be via Zoom.
Oh, okay. Good. And at five o'clock, um, that Tuesday the twenty-first is a conservation board meeting at Hurstville. Um, for any of you that choose to attend that. And I think that is the sum total of the business I have for you today.
All right then, thank you. Are there any, we will have, uh, after the meeting, I suppose we'll have a little budget talk yet. Conversations, any board or commission reports that we um, did talk to Tommy Attorney and he was updating for closing date for across the parking lot, and he's been in contact and did a title opinion on it, there's a couple linked on it, probably they have to be cleared. Uh, nine-one-one board meeting, again. Oh, what did we miss then? Then what did we update there? Um, they're using the microwave tower, we're waiting on the repeaters.
Trying to get some research done on a tower that's possibly not being used.
Yeah, the Bernard Tower is not being used anymore, so we don't know that they're going to decommission that or not, but I've called Kyle, I have not repat- heard back. Kyle, I told him, just keep me updated as we were progressing forward. There was some talk here of, they did, um, Motorola have hired Supreme. It's the name of Supreme to install the radios in the, in the cars and the repeater, so they're moving forward with that. So we are moving forward, I guess, waiting on several items to still come. And uh, Chief, Chief Miller and Chief Nixon were here from Preston and Sebula respectively. Um, representing Preston and Sebula as they're talking radios and I think we've had that ironed about, you know, as far as the extra radios that we have, where they're gonna be located and available to whoever may need them. Um, again, we're still, I've sent, I think, all of you updates, what the grant that's being applied for, for six hundred ninety-five thousand dollars, I believe, so it looks fairly good for us, so. Again, if, if you see Lynn, he's put a lot of time in on that and uh done a lot of running and background and collecting data and putting it together and and this gal that's writing the grant for us is doing her due diligence too, the way it looks. So it'd be, uh, it'd be really helpful if that's the case and move forward that way, they have a waste authority meeting, I had a waste authority meeting yesterday. And they're in the process of hiring, they had their full-time employees still working, but he's going to pursue other avenues when they find a replacement for him. The state audit was finalized, uh, we're all good. Um, revenue was actually down about three percent in, ending June of twenty-two. And he attributes that to, uh, basically not the end of the pandemic, but uh when the pandemic started, there was just a dramatic influx of people cleaning their houses or garages. De- declutter, decluttering, if you will, um, it was, he said it was just tremendous, so. And we are working on the addition, the office out there, so that's being built as we speak. So, um, yeah, they've got some good applications for the for their position, so looks good for them.
Seventh Judicial, we met, um, again, their big thing is about the merging of some some items and what's gonna be, who's gonna have control over what, and if they'll even have a local board. And, um from Des Moines, it sounds like there was a lady that met with that, but would not allow the Seventh Judicial Board to attend that meeting at all. It was originally set up for us to, and we got an email and said, you cannot attend.
So there was a closed session type meeting or some kind, or that's to be a reason to be closed, I would guess, but. Yeah, I don't know, I, I guess I read some of them, I don't read all of them Seventh Judicial, but there sounds like there could be a little controversy there, saying what the work portion.
Yeah, kinda the same thing that's going on with the mental health. You know, um, a couple of people from the board did go up to Des Moines and talked about their I, I wanna call it their troubled housing, the high-risk people, and getting a system going locally around here, which would be in that Seventh Judicial District on basically training and arming their officers, they would go through the same academy as a um, the police officers do to do all their checks and stuff, just for the high-risk areas. They're working on getting grant funding from that, and that sounds very promising and going forward.
No, we had JCA meeting last week and uh, we had the new election of officers and that got situated for the next year. Um, they changed the appointment for elected officials from one to two years, gotta be more um, consistent with the elec- the election cycle, so we don't have to re-certify every, every year to reappoint. And they're putting together employers for a job that are coming up soon, so um, they do this annually, so they're in the logistical work at getting that done. So everything's kinda going full steam, we did make contact when we had John Williams come in, I think it was John Williams talk about the Andrew um, jail or whatever, um, we did put him in contact with JCA to help with the catalyst grants or one of those programs out there that they might be able to utilize, um, to help stabilize that building or get them along track, so few things going there, but.
Good. Yeah, that's all. Great work in progress. Okay, any other further business before the board this morning?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
The motion to second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. I oppose nay? Motion carried, meeting is adjourned.